Good morning, and welcome to the Audit Committee meeting for Tuesday, September 14. Let's open with a word of prayer. Lord, thank you so much for this beautiful day. Thank you for the rights we have as Americans, including the right to assemble and to govern ourselves. Be with us this morning as we make decisions that affect our community, our neighbors, our businesses. Some of these decisions and conversations are very hard. Lord, please be with us to help us make these decisions and take our votes in fairness and in truth. In your name we pray, amen. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, publicly, for which the nation is built.
Thank you. We have a quorum with five members present, and I'd like to, well, actually, before we go on to the business of the meeting, I'd like to recognize some visitors. I believe we have some folks from our Leadership Columbia County class with us. Yes, please stand up and introduce yourselves. Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you for being with us. I hope you learned something and enjoy your time with us today. If you have questions when it's over about what in the world was that and how it works, please let us know. We'd love to engage with you. May I have approval from the minutes of the last audit meeting?
Take a motion to approve.
Second.
Sure, move. Thank you. I'd like to get an approval for this agenda for today's audit meeting. Do we have any changes to it?
Not at my knowledge, Madam Chair.
Changes, approval, gentlemen? Let's see, moving right in there, we have folks from SME CPAs with us today. Mr. Evans, are you going to present for us?
I am. John conveniently lost his voice this morning, so you have me.
All right.
We need to pay particular attention, is what you're saying.
Are you charging extra to get you on?
No.
Okay, just checking.
Rate goes down if you get me. All right, let's start. We have four reports this morning, and we'll start with the Board of Elections. It is a great day to be in Columbia County, so that we don't have a recall election of our governor today, so I'm sure the Board of Elections is glad to hear that. What I'm going to do, instead of going through in detail, I just want to go, take a look at page three, Board of Elections report. See that had no exceptions in testing areas that we tested. I think that's pretty remarkable, given what has occurred. And these are my takeaways, and I'll leave these with you. Number one, we had no exceptions noted. 2020, all counts was an extraordinary year. Had COVID, they had to deal with. Presidential election, had new voting machines, had a 32% registered voters, presidential election in 16. So there was a lot of very high score. That, you know, we question each department on areas where efficiency issues, personnel in Board of Elections. One was on comments on that. That's on page nine, if you want to read. Their thoughts, their operations. Nine. But the two big issues seem to be having to recharge those new machines. About every machine, a hand on every one. A lot of them. They're having to go through that. Also, during an election period, cycle. Nonemployed. And if you look at page 10, and we just did statistical analysis, portrayal of difference between 2016, 2018, and 2020 in terms of vote, number of votes, registered voters, marks, like what we just. Number of registered voters backing along. Any questions? And you can also see there on the graphs, amount of dollars that were spent, quite a bit different in. Does not reflect cost to the voting state.
I can make a quick comment. I'm sorry. What's that?
Not entirely.
No. There will be some expense ongoing that's passed over to the counties.
All the equipment is in the cages. The cages were a large expense. Had to refit that warehouse, so that was all tracked in that, too. A lot of those expenses will not be recurring, but the voting machines, by the nature of how they work, are more expensive than the other ones, the ones we had previously. So there is some expense.
Recharging. We have to, well, my initial gut reaction is, I don't know what you mean. I know what recharging is, but what it practically means to us, we could get some kind of trickle charge set up that will charge them up when they go down?
They have the.
We have that.
Okay.
It's just, it's a lot of machines, and so the sheer numbers. One of the comments in there was they had identified a need for two more people. The second person, you approved that in the budget, the second person started yesterday. So there's actually a warehouse manager who do nothing but take care of that equipment around. So it's cumbersome. It's just the nature of the beast. They're going to have to deal with it. It is stored in two locations. That's partly by space, that's partly by design. Since you have to take it to precincts that are closer to this area anyway, it's okay to leave some of that in this warehouse. So it's a juggling act, but I think they're getting their systems down and they'll deal with it.
Six hundred and twelve machines.
On page six, that's on.
Is that a full-time job, just taking care of?
Absolutely, it is.
And there was another comment. There's, you know, a little bit of lag by the time Rick and his folks come in and do the audit, then we get where we are. Glenn mentioned that we approved the positions of the budget, so we're good to go there. And then you may, I believe everybody knows, but I'll just make the comment publicly, that we're in the process of renovating part of one of the buildings down in G3, which is behind the Department of Revenue there, where people have voted for the last several years. That's going to become the Department, Board of Elections office. So we're in the process of renovating that now. That'll give them some additional space. So everything that was kind of noted in the report, fortunately, is either already done or almost done. There were no exceptions, which is good, but even the recommendations to management about how do we make it better, those are almost finished by the time you got the report.
And we, I recall, we gave a little grace period for the Department of Elections. That was. Auditors on them, put them back in the normal cycle delivery.
Gentlemen, are there any other questions on the Board of Elections audit?
Sir, we had a five-fold increase in absentee by mail. Did that require additional personnel in the Board of Elections to process all of that?
It does at the time of the election, so they hire the, that. But those aren't people that you need to maintain on staff.
Lot of those are hired through.
They're temps.
Very good. Let's move on to building standards.
Okay. Page three. I'll get you to turn to page three again. My takeaways there are, we did have some issues that arose during our testing. We'll go through those. But I do have one correction under receivable. It says we noted 6,920. That should be 3,670 of 19,000. Other receivables weren't specifically related inspection fees by that, and I will. First looked at those numbers, we thought that old receivables, I compared to what old receivables were. A lot of that got cleared up. There was also one transaction under the purchase card used, mark, not a lot, but a few hundred dollars over the 2,000 mark, which require.
What was it for?
It was for renting charge, and normally the renter and those charges have not been
Inflation?
Wasn't inflation. I think they've had some additional items that had to be rented, kicked it over 2,000. Didn't appear to be a willful, you know, move to avert the purchasing policies. This would have been during the period when it was still.
Forward, everything will be.
Right. Guidelines.
Five thousand.
My takeaway is here is, really, the focus is not on the dollars in this department, but my answer, Department, which that relates to inspections and rein inspections. Anyone who has not paid their inspection fee, I mean, monthly, effort to collect outstanding fees.
Don't mean to interrupt, Rick, but I think something about not issuing, how have these gone on? Or do they not have COs?
I think if they, if somebody's been in the system a while and haven't paid, project may be, they're still on that ledge or so, if they come back in and try to permit.
Projects that never go to completion have that. We do have instances where people have moved in the house without a CEO, dealt with those. We have, a lot of these fees are businesses that come in, do business, and then back to Atlanta, don't come back to Columbia County again, not going to pay their bills.
So when they can come in and they don't have to get a Columbia County license per se, to pull a permit, because they have a state license.
Right.
So not have to catch up.
Oh, absolutely. We have our code that says we do not have to provide them any services that was money, so if they come back to town, before we give them any kind of permits, we get our money out of that.
Seems if COs issue some point in time.
Right.
To buy the homeowner and him take it up with whoever, or.
That is the guideline. The guideline is. Look on page six. There's an analysis of what was. A good thing about this 9,420, 8,200, all within the year. Out that's older than, not as great. Larger balance.
Contractors coming in to pull another permit, wouldn't he need to catch up on his outstanding balances before he gets a new permit?
Yes.
I would think.
That's part of our recommendation there on page. Honor to those.
Are there any other comments and questions, gentlemen? Having none, let's move on to the hotel motel tax. Seems like we talk about this every time you're in front of us.
Well, we generally keep hotel motel in the cycle, because we're, cycle, at least twice a year. We have two groups of hotels that we look at. So have two different reports. I look at, well, I'll just walk you through what I think are the takeaways. So the goal is what's been lodging tax. Pair that with what the hotels' sales taxes collected, added. Then also, as a second look. Differences in the lodging tax. Part of the lodging tax. But we just like to see the whole, what tax, you know, what are their, are their taxes collected and what are taxes remitted. If you look at most of these, what we found in the hotels' report records, pair to what was in the county, what they, county, up in the county. Taxes added more than the taxes collected. Volume of elections in, to the state or to the county.
We give them the money back if they overpay?
Not to my knowledge. I've never known. So every time we've done one of these reports, like variances, what they remitted. Back and looking at all.
When we say remitted versus collected, so they collected, we proved that they collected X amount of money, and then they remitted more than that. But are we getting granular into the, into the collection piece, to look at every single night, to make sure that they collected every night they were supposed to collect?
We are not going down to the individual totals.
So when we talk about that, you know, if they're remitting more than they're collecting, it may be that, you know, they had something internally that said, oh, we had this extra night that we collected for, that we owe the county. You know, this is extremely difficult. I think the states made it very hard on counties to do this, and we're having to pay for services. Unfortunately, we have good auditors to help do this, but this is extremely difficult to get into the numbers of these hotels and get exact numbers.
Yeah.
You know, we only had one instance where we were, that to the hotel records.
I'm saying, not collecting enough to pay us.
That was an early month. That was January of 2016. I only report back to you and let you know. Not providing the information. They gave us February, March, but we were. We will be, like I said, we will. Always try to select if there's a new hotel that's come on, try to put them in. Reporting timely. Didn't find any instances. They were all using the correct form, all submitting them timely. First got into this.
Right.
Right forms, reporting timely. And also with hotels that we've looked at. That are, that held this, just for them, not all the hotels. Paying attention.
Mr. Chairman, are you suggesting that we return this $203 to the famous tenant?
Absolutely.
A motion?
I would just request that staff look at it.
Yeah, well, yeah, before you make a motion to do that, can we look at this process? You may be opening up a can of worms. It's going to be extremely difficult to put back in the can. I mean, I will go give them $203 out of my pocket before I go through the process of having the county do this. We will look into it if that's the committee's direction, if y'all would be willing to consider that.
Oh, yeah. Look into it. I mean.
Yes, absolutely. We'll look into it.
Because if you're just, if, when you do the audit, are you like deep diving all the records, or you're doing a audit, which means you're testing samples?
We're, yes, we're testing samples, not doing a deep dive.
But may not be accurate.
And we can do, you know, we could.
And if I could just interject, you have to remember, they are reporting exempt sales, and we are taking their word for what they are saying are exempt sales. And sometimes that number's pretty large.
There has been some. If I had a recommend. How they're classified. That's where it gets really.
Great.
Brains that.
I mean, there's numerous.
It's in the state code and the length of the stay, if it's more than so many nights, I think it's exempt at that point.
I could see that's off track. That's.
Well, with the committee's direction, we'll go back and look at how we can get a little closer to the accurate number. And certainly, if we're over collecting taxes, we need to remit those back. The process is going to be important.
Look at my recommendations, process first.
Very good. So the committee recommends that the staff take a, take a look at this and come back with some kind of recommendation of how you'd like to.
Yes, sir.
Do that.
Okay.
Very good.
This is not a new phenomenon. This has been based. Larger because.
You have over 1,200 rooms, I believe.
Bigger issue in terms of.
Do y'all have any other questions on the lodging tax?
Question, you said something about the state. So they'd have a set of guidelines that they should, we can have another set of guidelines, or should all the guidelines be about?
So the hotel motel taxes, actually, are state law.
I get.
Right? But the way that, what I meant was, the way that we have to enforce it, I mean, the Department of Revenue puts the audit completely on the back of the county to go in and audit this. The state doesn't participate in that.
But we can do it however we like.
We can audit.
And then McCaffrey and every, every other county can do it however. They audit the way they want, or there are a set of guidelines?
There are, there are guidelines as to what we can and can't do. Yes, sir.
We have to go on site. They do not, the hotels do not have to submit reports to us.
Right. It's tough.
Now, imagine you could probably audit it to death, but at some point, you're spending more on audits than you are collecting back, so there's a balance, balance there as well. Any other lodging tax questions? Right, I understand. Next time, we've got maintenance, lost and bombed projects, license and permitting, plan review, and the coroner.
Those are on the board for the upcoming.
Have you visited Mr. Collins yet? That's always a fun visit. I can't wait to hear how that goes. Do you have any other closing comments for us?
Not.
Very good. Any, any other final comments or questions? Very good, having none. Let's see. Is there any public comment participation? Having none, we have nothing for executive session for this committee meeting. Going to adjourn and come right back for the Management and Internal Services Committee. Whoop, sorry. Got to lose some folks first. I went too fast. We are, we have already had our pledge and invocation. We have all three members present, and I'd like to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Second.
Thank you very much, and approval of this agenda for today. Do we have any changes?
No changes, to my knowledge.
Very good. We've got a fairly short agenda, so this won't take long. We do not have any presentations, anything for the consent agenda, going right into debate. Mr. County Manager, tell me what you have first for us.
First item we have is an independent contractor agreement for a Chin's prosecutor. This is a request of the juvenile court. I believe Judge Evans and Mr. Rutledge are both here. You can see that the recommendation is to enter into a contract with Mookie Patel back as the juvenile Chin's prosecutor, and you can see the rate is $1,333.33 per month. Staff recommends approval on this, and if you have any questions for the judge or Mr. Rutledge, I'm sure they can answer those.
Judge Evans, I hate to bother you, but can you come give us a very quick rundown of. about CHENS? Couple of sentences, what it is, why it's important, and what this money goes toward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, CHENS prosecutor in the 2013 code revision, created a program called Children's done to kind of catch all, uh, out their gaps and slip through. And so this was an effort to try to provide services on delinquent, facts, criminal. So we deal with truancy, we deal with traffic and we do. Our CHENS prosecutor is. Placement, I actually served as prosecutor for 2013. Katie Connor was brought on by Judge Flandigan, she is services. I have asked her, hell, she is former assistant attorney, colleague of mine, approximately 20 years now, prosecutor.
Is this just, if, if, in terms of dollars?
Uh, actually, it's a reduction.
It's less.
Want to go down and, and start a ladder, dime and put in some.
Well, if it's a reduction, move to consent quickly.
So moved, thank you Judge Evans.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That will move to the consent agenda and we have a, um, policy revision, but it's not a major revision, it's just some jo- job title changes, correct?
That's correct. Um, Jeff, if you wanna come up, talk about these, I'll just give you the brief overview while, while Jeff's walking up. As you know, uh, we've made some changes to titles over the years, commission has approved those changes already through your normal actions, uh, they just need to be updated in the comprehensive policy manual, Jeff's been working on that?
Yeah, basically, it's just cleanup, we have 141 policies, 73 of them have title changes, set of redlining, I'm gonna bring them.
Do these just name titles of jobs?
Just titles, no content.
Right. Move to consent.
Second.
So moved, thank you, sir. All right, internal services.
The only item I have for you this morning is a safety grant that we have been awarded from ACCG. This is, um, through the workers' compensation fund and it's a $6,000 grant that we wish to purchase additional ballistic vests and combat helmets for our fire personnel and any monies remaining will be used to purchase stop the bleed kits as well.
Do the, does the fire department already have ballistic vests and combat helmets?
They do.
They have them on each, each?
These are additional, not replacement, I think four.
They don't have a full complement.
Right, this, this will purchase four.
Need more than four?
Yes.
I think they're budgeting some each year.
Aren't we budgeting some each year?
Yeah, every year we budget.
You have enough?
You, you can come up, if, if you, if you wanna come up real quick, Chief, Chief, if you wanna come, you can come up, if you've got the answer to the question, not saying that Chief Wallen doesn't, but.
But, but, I mean.
I can't tell you how many times I've had division directors and county, deputy county managers answer my questions for me.
Talking about combat helmets and rescue vest, I mean, maybe it would be, we would all, everybody that, whoever needs one needs to have one now.
Yes, sir, and that, that is something we hope to complete this year, uh, with our budget. Most of our apparatuses, especially in school zones, currently already have two on each truck, but as you know, some of our engines ride three people, so we're trying to complete those as well as rescue trucks. This helps move us towards that goal with our ultimate, with this grant, um, we should be able to at least every truck and have it fully equipped. Also to include captains, so we'll have vests with them, so we're not taking from a truck, everybody will pretty much have one on, on the.
So the goal is to have.
We're almost there in this.
So you're saying the goal is to have one for everybody on that shift, on that truck right now, eventually would you want one to go with each, each person?
No, ma'am.
Okay, just enough for who's on, on that shift.
Just enough for the riding positions, um, on the truck, that way, 'cause most time, people coming into that type of situation, they're gonna be coming from the house, they're gonna be coming from. Um, but like I said, we do have additional spears, or if we go to three per unit, have enough if someone had to put in operation, we could handle it. But our main goal right now is to get them equipped across the board, what our current staffing level is.
We've got about two per truck, is that what you said? Is there extra training that goes with that?
Yes, ma'am.
I would think if I walked around with a ballistic vest on, I would feel bulletproof and maybe not behave the same, so that they do go through special training for those things?
Yes, ma'am, each summer, uh, we coordinate with the sheriff's office and, uh, go across and we do a joint training exercise where the sheriff's office can teach you tactical side of how to move through a building and then the fire service and EMS, combat casualty care, taking care of the wounded. It's, it's a joint effort, all the agencies in the county work together.
I just wanna make sure I'm being clear, if we need more vests, let's buy the vests, I mean, I, we, our budget is that we're gonna get there, so we'll make sure we have the equipment we need, it's that, to me, if it's, if we don't, it's inexcusable, so.
The money, money is there, it's just a matter of ordering the equipment, getting it in there, getting the training, so I hear you, Mr. Chairman.
Cool beans, thanks. Appreciate you, Chief.
Well, it's great that our workers' comp company is, um, helping to fund some of that, that's a good incentive program.
Move to consent, if we haven't already done.
Second.
Second, very good, um, so moved. Next, technology, Mr. Blanchard, how much are you spending today?
Not as much as normal.
Okay, let's hear it, let's hear it.
Um, I've got two items for you today, the first one is a City Works Agreement Addendum. Um, you've heard me talk about City Works before, that's the work order and asset management software that many of our, uh, county departments use. Um, we received the invoice this year and in looking through the contract, I noticed there were some changes that we had that needed to be made. There's an addendum to the existing license agreement that included things like the, uh, the department manager name, the contact, uh, the type of license we use, like that. Well, since the original agreement was signed, we now have a new GIS manager, you know, we premium licensing instead of standard licensing, so there's some changes that need to be, needed to be made. The substantive part of the agreement, um, is unchanged, but we do need to change a couple of things in the addendum, so that's included in this, um, as well as authorization to make the $100,000 payment to City Works. Staff have reviewed this, recommends approval.
So what exactly, if the substantive, substantive part of the agreement has remained unchanged, this is just the $100,000 a year payment, this is a payment on the agreement?
It's that and then some small changes like the, the previous, or the addendum that existed before mentioned Mary Howard as our GIS manager, Larry Hobbs is our GIS manager, so we wanted to clean that up and make sure that we're referencing the right people.
So there's really two parts, yes, there's the cleaning up and then there's the payment part, because they're not charging us to clean up the names.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved, and you got one more?
Yes, ma'am, this is an approval of agreements with two companies that are going to be our Genetek integrators. Uh, Genetek is our video management software, it's what we use for all of our traffic cameras and for our security cameras that we have deployed county. Can't deal with Genetex, uh, to deal, Genetek to get support for the, the product, you can, but they prefer that you work through integrators. Um, so if we have a need for a new camera, we need to work with this integrator in order to get licensing and support for the installation. Uh, we can call Genetek if there's a failure with the product, but, uh, generally they want you to work with the integrators, so, um, we released a, an RFP, uh, we wanted to have two integrators so that we have a choice of who to contact, one has to be a primary, one has to be a secondary, so we're recommending that we, uh, contract with A3 Communications for the primary integrator and with Net Planner to be, uh, the secondary integrator. There's not really a fixed cost for this, um, the only, the only amount that's budgeted is $16,000 for our Genetek Advantage Licensing. That means that we can use their products and call them when we need support. So, uh, really what we're doing is, is choosing which vendors we want to work with for new cameras, supportive cameras and things like that, so, uh, the two agreements here are for, the two firms are for two years each with initial terms from September 21st of this year through June 30th of 2023 with up to full renewals for those and staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
Second. So moved, thank you, anything else, Mr. Blanchard?
No, ma'am.
All right, do we have any other committees to report today? All right, any legal matters? Um, let's go into staff reports, Johnson.
First one, just for your information, is our personnel savings, you can see that, um, we've already almost met our, our budgeted goal, um, that's really just a number that we, that we put there, we've, in, in the years past, we've really, we worked hard to get to that number, uh, but, you know, this year we, when we, we had so many new positions that we added to the budget, it just took a while to fill those positions, so, uh, they go online July 1 and then there's that lag behind it, so we're adding the personnel savings every day. But again, these are budgeted numbers that are going right back into the budget, I mean, or money that's not being spent, so this is real savings that we're gonna see at the end of the year. And then also, we, uh, included the employee turnover rate that you asked for, um, and then the number of applications. I'm sorry?
Trying to understand. If we turned over, January, we turned over 13 people, not a negative turnover rate.
Our 12.
If you don't do it based on the hires, you based on turnover as the percent of staff that you have that you turn over and not that you replace.
Yeah, I mean, so, granted, I mean, I, I understand, I think, I think we're looking at, at two different things, we could, we can run that number as well, so 13 out of our 1,300 employees to get, you know, that, that's how many people left.
Mm-hmm.
Um, historically, when we started doing this, this was, this was the way the turnover rate was presented to us, but if you wanted a different format, we can get it for you.
Yeah, it's just a number of people that you turn over, based on the employee count. We've turned up 131 people this year, because I still, I mean, that, that's 131 people we have to replace, so it's really a separate measure.
Right, I understand.
So I noticed on the list of new hires that we, we've hired a lot and, and these numbers obviously show a, a lot of new folks, uh, um, especially in August, I imagine that's a lot to do with being able to pay a little more for the starting salaries, can you talk about that a little bit? And that's made it easier on the front line, folks?
It has, we're getting a lot, a lot more applicants, we're getting a lot of better applicants, um, the, the sheer number of new hires that you're seeing there are, are really a result of the, the new positions in the budget. We, we've, we've had to add staff because of our growing needs, grass cutting being one, we've added crews to that, so, um, that's, that's what you're seeing, really that, that higher number there. Uh, typically, August is a, is, is a pretty, a higher number than, than the rest of the year, I mean, the rest of the months.
Well, good, um, and so, I'm trying to look on here, how many open positions do we have now that we're actively trying to?
I get that report every week, Jeff, do you know how many open positions we have right now we're actively trying to pursue? About 40, 40 open jobs?
Because before it was.
Oh, huh, over 100?
100.
Yeah.
So you're doing a little bit, are most of those, um, the grass cutting, janitor?
Actually not, I think we're doing a pretty good job of filling those jobs now, we have some, some mid-level jobs that, that, uh, it, it just takes longer to go through those, uh, and then we have a few of our upper, upper level jobs, we're just waiting for the right candidate.
Good, I know this is, this has been a lot of work with the flood of, of folks coming in, I know this has been a lot of work for y'all, Dr. Carney, thank you for, um, everything y'all are doing to keep us on track.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And just from personal experience, I know hiring one new person is a lot of, lot of paperwork and, and a lot of effort, so this is tremendous. Questions? All right, thank you, um, internal services, year-to-date report.
Yes, the first report I have for you is the year-to-date budget report, this is for the month ended August 31st, we should be performing at around 17% at this time. Of course, revenues are gonna be a little slower, uh, reporting in the general fund until we get, start getting tax dollars in, probably in November, but you will see the list of, uh, some of our major funds here for your information.
All right, let's have a SPOST update, I'm always excited to hear how SPOST is.
This report is through the month of July, we received, uh, over $2.6 million in July and that has brought our annualized percentage increase to 21.07%.
Comments?
That's very interesting to see, I'm watching it closely just to see how the economy turns, because I, I still attribute the big numbers to, yes, we have growth, but the Fed's printing money and giving, passing out.
Well, part of that is also the impact of the internet sales that came on last year and once we get through a full cycle of that, I think you will see the percentage drop some, um, because we will then have that, you know, in the, in the average numbers that we're looking at.
That is April, right?
I think it was like.
Um, on to the investment report.
Yes, attached is our current list of investments for your information.
Very good. Having no comments and questions on that, is there any commissioner or public comment participation? All right, we have nothing for executive session and there being no other business for this committee, um, we will adjourn and come back in.
About three minutes.
Three minutes, thank you.
Part of the Development Planning Services Committee, uh, we've already had the invocation, the pledge, we have, uh, three members present, have the minutes for you. Paint a motion.
Second.
So moved. Uh, any changes to the agenda, sir?
Not to my knowledge, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll move right along, there's no presentations, uh, no consent agenda, we'll move into the debate agenda.
Thank you, sir. First one I have for you is purchase of stream mitigation credits for the Martinis Park improvements. Applied for these, uh, for our core permit many months ago, we were directed to purchase 708 stream mitigation credits, however, they were not available, they have finally become available, have the invoice in hand, so with this authorization to purchase these 708 credits in the amount of $56,640, we can then submit that to the core to get our permit to then put this project out to bid next month. Been a long time coming, I know Mr. Johnson's pushing it hard.
Tell us where this park is?
This is beside, um, Blanchard Park, this will be our new, um, nature style park, it's a road we'll come off of, off of Columbia Road, I, I just lost the name of it, you remember the name of the road, Kyle?
Yeah, I can't either. It, it's just by, uh, Trinity Baptist Church.
Road beside Trinity Baptist Church, this road extends through property we already own and ties to Blanchard Park, uh, Mr. Luton's group is working on some playground equipment, there'll be another dog park in there, uh, there's a nice, beautiful, tall, large, overstory oak trees in this area, nice stream running through it, really nice nature.
Oak Ridge Road, uh, Oak Ridge Road.
Oak Ridge?
Yeah, that's District 2.
That's recommended approval of those stream credit purchase.
Move to consent.
Okay, so moved. Uh, next item, uh, under Development Services, uh.
Take all these four, Barbara, he apologized for his abscess, he was.
Yeah.
So, first thing I have for you is alcoholic beverage license for Meat Rancher Familia, they're doing business, Meat Rancher makes a restaurant, this will be in the old St. Louis Burger, Harris Ferry Road, they have provided all required documents. old St. Louis Burger, Harris Ferry Road. They have provided all required documents. Have posted notice. We have not received any complaints or opposition to this alcohol license. The survey does meet all requirements of our code. So staff recommend approval of this license.
Move to consent.
Second.
All right, so moved. Move on to, uh, next item.
Next one I have for you is alcohol beverage license. Poppy LLC doing business with Tipsy Bar and Grill. 239 Meridian Drive. This is the former location of N-Zone Bar and Grill. Our code does state that, since there's been less than a year since that alcohol license has been revoked or removed or submitted. They don't have to do a distance survey. However, we did have GIS put one together. We did get all required documents. We have not received any complaints or opposition to the application for this license. We recommend approval of the license act the October 5th, Board of Commissioners.
And this is the address at which we went through some rigmarole with, somebody had marriage license and all that.
Correct. We had a, we believe to be a, um, a surrogate applicant for the owner.
And this is not the same applicant?
Not the same.
No way, shape, form, fashion, not the same people?
Move to consent.
Well, I got a question. So this is Tipsy Bar and Grill.
Bar and Grill, correct.
But it's not a bar by definition?
Like Applebee's Bar and Grill.
Okay.
It's all in the name. As long as they, they have to meet our requirements, 50% food sales. The applicant does, on their application, is included here. They do recognize they, they have to meet that requirement. They have recognized they have a copy of our, our code, all alcohol beverages.
Check all the boxes on here.
Correct.
So it is the intention of them to be a restaurant more so than a bar?
I can't say what their intentions are. I can only tell you what they have told us on paper and signed.
Okay.
So moved. Go on to the next item.
I have for you here. This is an alcoholic beverage license for Fresco Cafe. So this is on 4017 Columbia Road. Ralph Armstead Jr. filed an application to sell distilled spirits. He currently has license to sell beer and wine on premise. He has come back now asking for distilled spirits. Little background to this is during his original application, he did check that he wanted distilled spirits, beer and wine. When he was given the fee, he decided not to go with distilled spirits. He went with beer and wine. Department of Revenue conducted an inspection on August 16th, 2021, where they found he had a octobar with spirits. A lot of that was, all of the distilled spirits received, as well as a lot of beer, we'll see. Not purchased from a wholesaler, was purchased at Costco. Was issued citations. He has not been to court yet. Don't know the outcome of that citation. Do know is that, feel that we were led on the application when he took spirits off of there. He originally checked it, then he hashed it out, initially that he did not want that, and then proceeded anyway, based on the, our findings. Based on county code, staff has recommended that we deny the spirits license.
Is he here?
You have a question?
Move to deny. Or would, would it stop? I have a brain fart. So if I make a motion to move it to consent, is it going to go to the full board to deny, or does it commit?
No, you can make, you can make a motion to deny and move it to consent. And that, that's the way it'll be unless a commission removes it. They're, that's the way it'll be on the consent agenda.
Okay, I make a motion to deny on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, so moved.
It depends on, based on this motion, he just will not get distilled spirits. However, there is ways to revoke his beer and wine license if that is something the board would like to see. And, and based on my readings, I did ask county attorney to look into it as well. I want to come up to the question. Based, our alcohol license, our ordinance, I'm sorry, excuse me, Chapter 6, 61(c), does say that they violate Section 66 of our code, which says that they, they violate any local, state, or federal law concerning alcohol. You can't revoke. Also in 661(f), it says if the owner violates any state law, revoke their license. 661(g) says if an employee violates the state law, while the owner knows, you can revoke their license. So there's a lot of stuff in our code that says this license can be revoked. Who's revoked, you have to allow a hearing. Applicant or the owner of the license does have the right to have a hearing in front of the board.
I am going to add to that.
That's correct.
And the conviction will come because the Department of Revenue pursues it, and we're, we're certain the Department of Revenue will pursue this?
Has a court date. There, actually, in your packet there, it says citation directing him to apply, appear in Atlanta. But Mr. Driver is referring to 66, I'm sorry, Chapter 6, Section 66k, and it says, "A license under this article shall be immediately revoked upon a conviction of applicant or any other person required to be named on the application, violation of any federal, state, or local law pertaining to possession, manufacture, sale, or use of alcoholic beverages, controlled substance, or imitation controlled substance." Based on that, if DOR convicts.
And what's the court date?
October.
October.
It's coming up.
28.
Yeah, I recommend we let it play itself out.
That's going to happen before we could even have all the hearings and stuff, even if we wanted to.
Keep an eye on the, on the DOR case. Back to what we find.
So if he's convicted, does it come back before us or just automatically?
State does it, right.
And he's closed right now?
Not closed. If you choose, mission has the right to suspend his license pending this outcome, if you choose to do so. He can still be open for business. He can sell alcohol.
Beer, wine, or liquor.
Correct. Seven days of getting that. Hasn't requested.
I recommend we just wait for the state to, they need to do.
I agree.
Okay, let's, uh, you have a questions on that?
So what, what is the motion that we need to make? So we don't do?
You already made your motion.
Already made it.
Okay.
Already done that.
Okay.
Okay, uh, any legal matters, sir? Okay. All right, let's move on to staff reports, planning services.
Yes, sir. Attached, included in your backup is the August 21st Planning Department workload measurement report. That's for your information, and also the July 21st Plan Review workload monthly report. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Yeah, let's move on.
Six, three, are for your information only, are, are monthly updates for building, state, open services. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you have.
It is interesting, our residential is, I don't want to use the word imploding, but if you think of a thousand a year, it's definitely trending down.
It is. I think it has a lot to do with, uh, supplies, materials. Big shortage. I think we've seen the lack of new neighborhoods come in. We did just recently get a brand-new neighborhood.
We, yeah, I was going to say, it's been kind of a roller coaster, kind of, not even month to month, but almost, you know, deadline to deadline. We in fact got nine new applications last Friday. So again, that's going to be reflected on Thursday. We have five or six agenda items. Not, not as many as we normally have had in years past, but by no means have we dried up either.
But this is a factor of not enough lots?
Uh, I think it has more to do with the ability to put vertical structures on these, on these lots and getting the materials. It's not just, you know, buy fours and sheets of plywood and things of that nature. It's also the, the infrastructure materials as well. And then there's just labor shortages and certain, you know.
Talking to a local builder, and he was telling me that blue lamb beams, these are.
Here, there's a roach crawling.
Thank you. I was a little distracted. I couldn't, I couldn't pay attention. Please start over.
Where do you go from there?
Good, good shot, by the way.
Looking for work on the side, we can hire you.
Aging building we're in.
Johnson and I have both had conversation with local builders that talked about their lack of getting blue lamb beams that they use for their floor system. They do engineered floors versus a lot of the beers. I'm not sure that it's still the case today, but for a while there, they were, they were basically rationing out those supplies to builders. That way, one builder wasn't getting all of them. I know, uh, the mills were buying a lot of material for their apartment projects too. But they were even told we had to slow down providing them materials. So hoping we're over that hump now. I'm starting to see a lot more lumber trucks coming through town. Backup.
I do see on the report, though, that the licensing apartments give them more occupational tax.
Yeah, we, we were really up on, on OCT taxes.
What are, what are they mostly making cupcakes?
I'm not sure.
What, what, do we know what the, what are people doing at our house?
That's a very specific one.
I don't dive into those. I don't know, Brian, if you have any idea what the, what the OCT taxes have been. I know, I know you don't get involved in that, but.
So a lot of them are just people moving their office into their house rather than, is that what you're saying?
We're seeing a lot of interest in, or at least a lot of inquiries, if not a lot of applications for home occupation.
But it's administrative stuff. It's not?
Yeah, for the most part.
Making something in your garage or whatever.
We're not getting a lot of those. And we get the occasional phone call on that, but you're, you do see a lot of, um, office-related, um, work-from-home type activities.
I think you're seeing, just like a lot of people are choosing to call Columbia County home, you're seeing, we're seeing a lot of businesses relocate from surrounding communities to have an office in Columbia County. So we're, we're starting to see that pick up, our location in Columbia County.
All right, any, uh, comments from commissioners of public?
Question on the paving that we're doing.
Yes, sir. We're, uh, Phase 1, our first list of roads we put out to bid. We're probably 75% complete with those. They're over in the Petersburg Station area, the Pass, Clark Point there, heading out to Windmill soon. About 75% through with that project. Could be wrapping up the paperwork on, internal paperwork on Phase 2, the last round of roads that y'all approved for us to move out on. I'm hoping that we have those out to bid next month. We Infu Project, which is a loss 2 project, which is slated to start in 2023. Have got DOT authorization to advance that project, so funding is available now. We're putting together the plans for that. However, Rich and asked us to look at some planes before we did the overlay. So we're looking at, um, Patriots Park, Whispering Pines, Summerlin, and Nob Hill Falls. We're looking at four intersections to let county staff go in, let turn lanes in, up to a level with the existing road, then we come through with the overlay. So it all matches, it all. Working that now. Hopefully have that project out to bid, Kyle, next month, in the next month, maybe the earliest.
Are those the only three subdivisions? On that, on we.
Island Lakes just put in two turn lanes for us.
To refresh my memory, how does it work on the, on the T-spots? We can go ahead and, and start work even though T2 hasn't taken yet?
Sales tax collections climbing rapidly. Y'all, you've seen that in Columbia County. The state has also seen loss project. So whereas before, they were just adamantly against advanced funding any of the, of the projects, they now see they have some money they can do that. Or advance funding these projects.
So we don't take it out of our pocket and beg for it back?
We always do. It was all T projects. We pay upfront, then they reimburse. That's every one of them.
But especially in the, the ones we are getting ahead. But we're, we're confident, though, they approve it, and that means it happens.
Absolutely.
Good.
We'll actually be bringing a contract to you that states are going to do the work, and they're going to pay us back. So before we do any money expended, or any money, you will, uh, sign a contract saying we'll get reimbursed. Plus our 3%, 3% fee for handling the project for them.
Excellent.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So we're not going to see Hardy Mack and some of the others jump on that?
No, ma'am, that, uh, those projects are still in the MPO phase right now. So we're not ready for the construction dollars. We're, we're on track to be ready for those construction dollars when they're available in 23.
23 will be here before you know it.
I know. It's coming quick. House will be busy.
That's all I have, Chairman.
Any other questions, comments? Nothing for executive session, so we'll adjourn at 9:33.
Thank you.